We've got about three minutes before we start. And just a little housekeeping. Uh, Jillie, are you up and rolling on Facebook Live?
Yes, yeah.
We've got Facebook Live going. If you feel a little uncomfortable because we've got such a crowd in here, so you can take your phone and step outside. They'll open the door. You can watch it live. It's your option if you want to or stay in here. However, you want to work it. Um, and then also, we're gonna take just a minute and before we get started, and remember a friend of ours that died this week. Commissioner Rutledge, Buzzy Rutledge, went to his funeral yesterday. I saw several of y'all there as well. Commissioner Rutledge was in office for eight years, right here from precinct two. Did a good job for us. And let's just take a moment to remember Commissioner Buzzy Rutledge. Thank you very much for that indulgence. Okay, we don't start until nine o'clock and we are pretty close to that, but not quite. Are we also doing a live feed on the ECN Eastern County News? Okay, good then. Good then.
I'm telling you. You, you, you wonder about things. I'm saying something else. And the next day, I got an email from the state one year. If I want you to work for them. Yeah. So, so tells you that they want you to do it.
Okay, we've got nine o'clock and we start with the prayer and then the pledge. Thomas, here's the list of prayers, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
For Lord, thank you for being with us today. Thank you for all the people that gave their lives. We're celebrating yesterday for giving their lives so that we can enjoy the freedoms that you've given this country, Lord. Please be with these men and women as they go about the county business. Please help them to, uh, to seek your will and follow your will and lead God to direct us. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. We're showing them a pledge and, uh, a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, we have a pretty full agenda today, so let's go ahead and get started. Item number one is to read and sign the minutes. I've got, uh, I think just one set of minutes from the May 11th meeting. With that, commissioners, any, uh, changes, additions, deletions? All right, can we have a motion then to approve the minutes as to when?
Motion said.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Can you oppose, same sign, end that period? And we're gonna send those around to get them signed by the end, commissioner. So we'll do it all for the final meeting. Item number two, discuss, consider adopting a resolution of restoration of all constitutional rights in Easton County and support the opening of all businesses with no restrictions. Commissioner Ryan sent this item to me and, uh, I'm not saying I'm for it, I'm not saying I'm against it. I am saying it's unusual. And with that, I contacted our legal counsel, Allison Bass and McGee at Austin. And, uh, Mr. Allison responded back, Jim Allison responded back. Apparently this also, this resolution or single one, uh, was on the HUD County agenda uh, back a while ago. And Commissioner, I mean, uh, Jim Allison, our attorney says, "The Commissioners' Court has no authority to adopt such orders and orders by the governor supersede orders by the county judge under chapter 418 government code. The proper procedure to challenge an order by the governor would be to file suit in the district court." Then he further went on and says, "May the 4th, the Texas Supreme Court denied an effort to challenge the emergency powers granted by chapter 418 government code in cause number 200340." Jim Allison, uh, that such challenges must be brought in the appropriate district court. And then finally, his, his last legal advice was, "Judge Fields, below is my response to inquiry concerning this proposed resolution," which is what I just read to you. He says, "My opinion is unchanged for consideration by Commissioners' Court." Commissioner Ryan, you brought that to us. Uh, at this point, I don't think that there's anything that we can do as far as adopting, not adopting. Uh, I think it's will be, uh, I would entertain a motion this time to table this item. Do we have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to table item number two. Any further discussion from Commissioners' Court?
Uh, to clarify a little bit, we're in the process of rewriting this to be a little bit more continual, I guess, are the words to use. Russ is helping me with it and we're, we'll put it back on the agenda for today.
Okay.
It'd be a different, different name, but we'll put another one back on the agenda for today.
Okay. Anything else, Richard? All right, with that, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor of tabling this item to a future Commissioners' Court agenda? Uh, signal by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Yes?
Is it future or June 8?
June 8. But I'll put another one, agenda item on there, Cat, because it's gonna be different title.
Which is a future, I think.
Yeah, it'll be a future meeting.
We've got a motion and a second and look like a unanimous vote, I think. With that, this item is tabled and we will have it back on at some future time or something similar.
Yes.
Or somewhat different. It's, that's up to whatever you're working on there, Commissioner Ryan. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number three, a 911 update, public dispatch update. Do we have our dispatch administrator back there, Jason?
I'm back here.
Yes, sir. You wanna walk up here?
My mess, I'm behind everybody.
You wanna come on up so you can get on the record?
I'm good, y'all can hear me from here, can't you?
Well, yes, we can. You're not, you won't be on Facebook Live.
Aw, man.
That hurt your feelings?
Sure.
You won't be on Eastern County News or hear that? All right.
Ain't nothing much going on. Just wanted to let y'all know that Cheryl's out on FMLA now. Uh, we were kinda expecting that, so we got to keep her in the clear. Uh, we replaced her with a part-timer that we hired. She started and in training now. Um, the, the main thing is that we continue to have some equipment, uh, problems out there. Um, later on in the, in the agendas for emergency, uh, amendments for the budget, I'm, I'm requesting to, uh, replace our repeater and two computer towers. Um, I don't think we can wait. One of those, if just one of those things goes out, we're down. And we don't have any backups. We're on, we're on, currently on our backup repeater now. So I'd like, I'd ask that y'all consider that later on. Um, it's, it's necessary and, uh, like I said, if one of those things goes out, we're toast. So, uh, I would appreciate y'all's consideration on that later on when we get to it.
Okay. Are you gonna say and talk us through that or are you gonna give me a go?
Can, if you like.
Okay. It, it might be a good idea. I, I know the rest has been updated on what needs to happen there. So if you want to say it's true.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anything else, commissioners, on 911 or dispatch? All right. And now we have Jeff Graham with Conley and Company, LLP, to present fiscal year 2019 audit. And let's see, how are we gonna do this? Bring him a chair up here or you gonna? We've got it, Mr. Graham.
Would you see if Jeff Graham is out in the hall, the CPA?
He's got a box.
Hey, Judge, I think you're served here to wanna speak on item number six agenda.
We've already tabled that item.
So the public is unable to speak about item number two?
We've tabled that item, yes.
Because, because it is tabled?
Yes, that's correct.
We're unable to at all at this point?
We've tabled that. Okay, and for the record, we're going to table with Jeff Graham. And ma'am, what is your name?
Terrible.
Terrible is here as well with Conley and Company. Of course, Conley and Company is our outside auditor, auditing firm. And with that, Jeff, I will turn the presentation over to you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Really appreciate it. It got some rain last night. I hope y'all did too. So, it was dry, the pot is dry, so we were very. I will, I'm just gonna go through the graphs, so I'll try to hit the highlights instead of going through the detail on the audit. There's, there's a lot of information in the audit. Uh, one, one new thing this year too, from the audit, you know, on the single audit side, generally, I think the last few years, we've, we've, we've audited FEMA because that's been your big program. This year, actually, you had the HUD, I think the community development block grant was a little over 800,000, I think. So that, that was included in our single audit this year. And I think you had that for, uh, water line, a dam repair, and I believe some flood repairs. So flood repairs have just been constant for you guys the last couple of years. I think with FEMA, I think it's over $4 million, you know, used for repairs over the years. So you've had lots of activity there. So that was our single audit focus this year. When you have a new program like that, it, it becomes high risk for us as far as categories. If they hadn't been audited in the past, we're almost, we have to audit that. So that's, that was a single audit part. And your, and your grants and your FEMA, your HUD, how all that worked, that community development block grant, that, that affects a lot with your financials. So that's kind of a, a common theme too, as we go through the numbers. Because as you get those grants, that increases that fund balance until you spend it out. So y'all know how that works. But you'll, so you'll see some shift between the years. This is also the second year of OPEB. So you've, when you've got your life insurance, your health insurance, all those, you already had the pension plan adjustment. So you're gonna see OPEB now for the second year. Uh, and that also requires you book a liability. So we'll get to that here in a minute. As far as the grants, page two, that was a clean opinion, so every, you know, no concerns. Basically, pretty standard as far as the tenure this year. So, nothing there. And graph three, again, we're talking about, this is, this is how the report's set up. These reports have gotten so long, I think it's over 60 pages now is your audit. But it's broken out in sections. What we'll deal with first is the government-wide. Government-wide is where you put all your fixed assets that are included in that, your depreciation, you've got your pension liability, your OPEB liability. So all that's included in that government-wide. So that's really similar to a for-profit, you would include everything as far as liability assets and appreciate those. Uh, the fund financial statements are basically what you're probably more used to seeing. It's more of a cash-in, cash-out type approach. Uh, so we've got the notes and we've got some additional pension plan disclosures, OPEB disclosures. Again, it just keeps adding up every year. I think the notes include six pages related to pensions and OPEB. And that's been a, uh, you know, Gatsby 68, Gatsby 75, I guess the last four or five years, you kind of do that. We've got some combining statements, which are gonna be your non-major. We've got the internal control section, which is required by governmental. Then we've got the single audit piece. So it kind of has broken out. Graph number four, again, this is government-wide. So what we're bringing in here are your fixed assets on the asset side predominantly. And on the liability side, the difference is gonna be your pension and your OPEB liabilities. So this is all the blue stuff. And you look at the blue line, the blue line are your assets and, you know, you can see what's happened the last few years from 18 to 19, that actually increased about $889,000. A lot of that increase, part of that increase was cash. You had a Texas, uh, Texas class account that you opened up this year, half a million dollars, I think, that's put into that. One thing that went down was grants receivable. Again, as of 9/30/18, you had some, some receivables in those grants as far as expenditures you had for reimbursement. Didn't have that this year or at 9/30/19, just one point in time. Uh, capital assets went up about $110,000. You, you had some, you know, you purchased equipment like you normally would in a year. You had some equipment, motor grader, you had some other vehicles, et cetera. That's about $740,000, I think with the depreciation was about $604,000, the net, a little over $100,000 is, is what it, what it increased your assets. Uh, the big change was really deferred outflows. And you say, well, what's that? Well, it's deferred outflows and inflows all relate to these pension plans. So you've got this actuary basically coming up with this liability. Now, this deferred outflow is our, the, the recording period for the actuary is 12/31/18. So you, you've paid, you've paid some contributions between that time and 9/30/19. So part of what that outflow represents in assets is contributions the county's made since that date. The other piece of that is really, when this actuary comes in and projects the earnings, sometimes they don't get it correct all the time. That's not what I was saying. They, they make a good educated guess with the changes. Another large piece of that is basically underreported those earnings. And, and they've typically done that the past few years. I think three years ago, it went totally the other way. They overstated it. So they're, they're being fairly conservative. But that shows up as an asset for the county. And then if you look at the liabilities, the, the red bar, it increased about 587. Uh, majority of that is the pension plan. The pension plan went up to $1,003,000 just, just this year as far as that liability. And it's kind of gone all over the board really the last, the last few years. Now, now, see, those outflows we just talked about, which are contributions you've already paid, plus the difference in the earnings, that, that increased to $1,085,000. So although the pension increased to $1,003,000, that, the real difference was, you know, less than $200,000, or a little over $200,000. So really, net, when you look at the whole picture, it didn't, it didn't increase that much. Uh, the other thing that decreased on liabilities was unearned revenues. And you think, well, what was that? It, it decreased about $540,000. And on your FEMA grant, you, you've got really two pieces. You've got a large piece, which those large projects are reimbursement. Those small projects, you basically got some of those funds upfront. So until you spent those, the money on those small projects, it's really unearned revenue. So basically, you used all that up in 19, you had, you had very little unearned revenue as of 12, as of 9/30/19. So a lot of that was used up as far as expenditures. Uh, debt did increase, decreased $50,000. I think you've got one lease for election equipment. That's just three leases. Three leases. And that's really, I think, 110 maybe is your total. So you don't, you don't really, you don't have a lot of debt period. I mean, that's, that's getting, that's pretty minimal. AP, accounts payable and accrued expenses also decreased to a little over $100,000. A lot of that's timing. I think last, last year or two, you may have had some expenditures related to your repairs at that one point in time. So nothing unusual, a lot of it's timing. Uh, graph five, and this, this is your net position, so it's really your equity, you know, where you're at government-wide. And you can see, last year was 9.6 million, this year's a little 9.9 million. So you had a healthy increase. One reason for the dip in 2017 versus 2018, if you remember, in 2018, it's the first year we adopted OPEB. So basically, we had what we call the prior period adjustment, which was $390,000. So if you kind of take that out, you've been pretty level, you know, in those last, those last four years. So you're approaching $10 million, really, really a healthy year. That increased $304,000 this year, that, that net position. Uh, expenses actually increased seven, uh, close to $800,000. Again, this relates to liability repairs, but your grants increased $890,000. So basically, you got grant money to cover those expenditures that increased. So those grant funds are covered in use for your equipment, some of your payroll, you know, a lot of your costs are related to your repairs. So again, that netted out positive for the county. Uh, let's see. Graph six, if you look at, you know, how's, how's that equity broken down? And, and basically, for governmental, you had, you had three types. You have restricted, y'all don't have any restricted, that'd be restricted by an outside source. Uh, for instance, if you had bonds, a lot of times you have restricted funds, that's not the case. Then you've got what we call invested in capital assets. So that's if you took all your fixed assets, took out any debt related to that, that's, that's your net position. And then the rest of it's unrestricted. You can see what happened this year, basically, both investment capital assets and unrestricted increases. So both of those increased this year. So that's a pretty healthy position for unrestricted. You've got a little $5,000, so a good, good position. Uh, graph seven, uh, we look at the change in net assets. Again, we talked about 18, could kind of see that below the line. Again, that was the OPEB, that first year we implemented it. You basically had to catch up from prior years. Uh, change in net assets current year, $304,000. And a lot of that, again, relates to the grants and how those flowed through. That was your predominant driver, I would say, for a lot of those. And graph eight, graph eight is if you, if you took, uh, basically, we took all the expenditures, let's, let's take out, let's look at all your expenditures, take out what you have fees for services, let's take out the grants. You know, basically, this number is, is what's funded with what's left, which is property taxes, uh, sales tax, you know, other, other taxes you have, interest income. And basically, you know, what happened between 18 and 19, you, you gained some ground there. In other words, those grants that you got helped the county as far as not having to fund as much with your property taxes and sales tax. Uh, 7.882 is what was funded to property tax. Property tax was pretty comparable both years. Uh, one thing that went up in that revenue category, I think your interest income increased about $80,000, so actually, you're right, the rates went up, so, uh, which was, which was nice. Uh, graph nine, again, we're looking at the general revenues. This, this is by type. We just talked about the property taxes, that top line. You can see, uh, the last four years, it's been pretty, pretty consistent, I would say. $7,470,000 in 16, and 19, it's $7,194,000. So pretty consistent. Your fines, forfeitures, you know, fairly consistent. They usually stay in that $500,000 plus category. Your other, that's actually, that 264, 786 is wrong. Of course, I found that out last night at 10:30 when I was looking. That should be 438,43. The audit's correct, the graph is not, so I wanted to point that out, see if you can say, why did that go down so much? It was actually an increase. Last year, it was 371, 629. This year, it should be 438,43. And we talked about, uh, the interest income. That's, that's a lot of your increase, uh, in that category. So it was a pretty healthy year for that. Uh, graph 10, and, and graph 10 is probably what you're used to seeing. This is your fund balance. So on the fund side, you're basically, again, you're looking at more of a, more of a cash inlet, cash, cash in, cash out, per se. So for instance, if you have grants, those flow in. If you have expenditures, those flow out as an expenditure. So again, more of a cash in, cash out. You don't have fixed assets in here, you don't have your pension liability. And you can look, from 2016, it started at 4.7 million, and 19, now it's 6.5. So it's, that's the type, you want the graph going that way. So it's, again, you, you're in a pretty good position. And a lot of that, your grants covered your expenditures, a lot of your expenditures. I know you had some actions, 25, 10, I think, in FEMA, but, but again, that's, that's benefited, I think, the county as, as far as being able to get your repairs done, getting everything back in order. I know those floods caused some huge damage, so that's an ongoing project. Again, this kind of, you know, just represents, you know, what, what you have there too in case of, you know, unforeseen circumstances. Uh, we, we did add a note this year too, and as far as subsequent events, we're doing it for all our engagements that relates back into COVID-19. We just don't know, as far as on the financial side, that's, that's kind of where we're at, but, you know, could it affect, we don't know. So again, we added as disclosure in the, in the audit, it's a subsequent event. Uh, it's just, we don't know what's gonna happen yet. Fund balance by type, graph 11, this is really, really positive. What, what you, the one thing you do see is you see the red bar kind of went away. And, and that was your grant fund. And what happened was it was transferred over the road bridge predominantly. So basically, where all the repairs were being done. So you were using that grant fund to kind of track those grants. That, that period ended, all that was transferred over the road bridge, basically. But you can see the general, the general fund plus your road bridge, that blue, that blue bar is a healthy increase on your, on your, on your fund balance side. So again, very, and the grants decreased 93, the general road bridge increased 1.3 million dollars. Other non-major, 153,000. So again, everything's heading in the right direction as far as that, correct? Graph 12, we did not have any audit findings, that's important. Uh, the rest does a great job, I mean, how, how we brag on everybody, really, really nice, really clean. And these, these FEMA grants are, are not even tracking. We got so many projects. So a lot of that tracking, it was important to get that done. And a lot of support to not have findings, you know, that, that could affect some of your future federal grants. And they, they look at those things. So anyway, we did not have anything that we, uh, called the finding or didn't have any findings, so it's very clean. And then graph 12, or 13, I'm sorry, I can't count. Graph 13 is, is our required communications. And, and what this is, is a summary of that smaller report that we handed out with the, uh, just the white cover, but I'll just go over really what's in it. What's, what's really in there is we just reiterate our responsibilities and our standards. If we had any significant change in the county policies, we would, uh, I think, uh, Gatsby 75 is the most significant thing we had. I will tell you, the Gatsby too, and FASB have, they've been delaying a lot of these new standards. So you have, you have a new standard coming up that relates to fiduciary activities. I think that's been pushed out another year. So you're, in the county world, you're seeing a lot of these standards, they, they were implementing like the lease standard. I know y'all may be familiar with that. That was pushed out a year. I think revenue recognition was just pushed out another year. So a lot of these standards are pushing out a year to let people focus on taking care of things going on right now. So we're, we're pushing, but in a few years, we'll see some of those policies. Uh, no, no significant or unusual transactions, no alternative treatments discussed with management, accounting estimates. You know, really, I don't have a lot of estimates on the county side. The probably biggest one is your pension. And you have an actuary that calculates, uh, so we rely on that actuary. No, the financial statement disclosures, but one new one I discussed was, was the subsequent event. Uh, that's the, I think that's probably the only new significant one.
Can we change one of the, the grant, the grant?
Yes. Yes. That's right. If you have a negative fund balance like the grant fund was, basically, you just, you have to be able to cover it with general road bridge. Y'all had plenty in these other funds, so it's just 20,000, that's right. Had no dis, uh, audit adjustments. Our audit adjustments were pretty much the standard ones we have, related to fixed assets, OPEB, pension, I think some debt maybe as well. So nothing, uh, extraordinary in there. No disagreements or, uh, no major issues discussed prior to retention. In other words, you know, nobody called us and said, "If you don't look at it this way, don't come down," or anything like that. That's, that's, that's never happened here, just pointing that out. Uh, no difficulties. Again, uh, we just, we just really enjoy it and appreciate the old help. And it's, uh, I do a good job. You do a good job of tracking your budget. budgets, that's, that's always been positive. You're conservative, you can tell that your fund balance is, keeps increasing, you've got a healthy net position, so. Graph 14, new standards, the only, we haven't had any this year, a lot of that was pushed out, we talked about, OPEB. You know, really what that is, or benefits past retirement, if you think about it, life insurance that you offer, and also health. So that now is booked, there's a liability, I think it's around 400, I think that's, something like that. So that, that was really all I had prepared. I'll be glad to go over it in detail. The report's got lots of information in it. You always, they're open if y'all want to call me anytime, please do, that's what we're here for. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much for letting us do your audit, we really appreciate it. So I know it's different times, so we're here, if you need something, please, please let us know. Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff and Tara, thank you very much for bringing us a presentation. We, five, also enjoy working with Loretta and her staff over there, they keep us on track, keep us going. And I think you can see, I don't have it works in other counties, no county judge in some other county, but I'm very, very proud to have their, their folks in our country. You might see an improvement over other counties when you come to Eastern County, I hope. And you know, with the, with the FEMA, you've got to have a catastrophe before you get the FEMA. So we've taken the fact that we don't want any more catastrophes, or flood, tornadoes, airplanes falling out of the sky, or railroad derailments, please, for a few more years, let's get through this. It does cause our budget to look a little wonky sometimes because of inflows and outflows, but I think you very well pointed out that it's a, it's a net positive for the budget, once we get through the process and get the roads and bridges and all that. A lot of this is related on, because they're not eligible to make their own applications. So we're, we're very pleased, we're working with them and give them some improvements out there as well. Commissioners, anything else at this point? For the County Company, Loretta, would you like to?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Green and Mrs. Boils. This year, the audit, whole audit process was very different. Tara and her team came and did the onsite one week, and I think everything pretty much shut down right after she was here. So we've, we've had some challenges this year communicating, getting, getting information back and forth, and I really appreciate your efforts at doing that.
All right, was there anything else to bring to us?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all for your work, you always do. Y'all, y'all been doing this, what, 10 years or so?
I think.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Is that right?
It is.
All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
Here, we have a motion to accept the audit from County Company. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. Audit number five is discuss the present JP Justice Court activity report. We've got Judge Glenn and Judge Spear. We've got to get to it.
First thing we want to do is turn that in.
Okay, all right, get there.
Once again, we're trying to bring these in every quarter. You should have mine and Judge Spear's. Just going along on, I'll go first. It's from the 3rd of February today, it came from May. I've got 12 active warrants, these are people playing hide and go seek with law enforcement. I've issued 73 warrants, I've had to go to nine inquests. This is before, a lot of this is before all the COVID-19 stuff, so I only got three eviction hearings and three civil hearings. I magistrate 159 people, had six blood draw warrants for DW, suspected DWI's, signed four protective orders, three detainment orders, and there were 435 tickets written in my precinct.
All right, thank you, Judge Glenn. Judge Spear?
Well, like you said, we haven't, we're not getting to have any hearings at, at this moment, so that looks a little short. But I did 30 warrants, five inquest, magistrated 170, two blood warrants, that's for DWI's, two emergency protective orders, and four emergency detention fees. And there were 497 tickets in my precinct, as a period.
Thank you, Judge Spear. Are the evictions more or less stayed right now, they're on hold? The process has changed a little bit, hasn't it?
Hopefully, by, after June the 1st, we can start having the hearings on the evictions.
Okay.
Right now, they got us shut in.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions or comments for Judge Glenn or Judge Spear?
No.
All right, gentlemen, thank you both. I know what you're doing, I appreciate it. Thank you. Can we have a motion then to accept these two reports in from Justice Court?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. Audit number six is present for approval, a list of items to be recycled or destroyed. And Donnie Gray, our facility manager, maintenance department, is he?
He's out there.
Is he out there? Okay.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Donnie?
Not out there? Okay. I guess for the record, I'll read this on here.
Cool, is it?
This is one to be, a list of items to be recycled or destroyed.
Thank you.
One bell tower, DA's office handheld radio, another printer, excuse me, from the District Clerk's office, a keyboard from the District Clerk's office, 10 or 12 phones, 10, 12 phones from agile probation, and many laptops in the Elections Office, battery backup assets, and there are several of those, in the Elections Office, a printer in the Elections Office, a tower from the Elections Office, desk from the third floor, security, a monitor from juvenile probation, a laptop from juvenile probation, a monitor from juvenile probation, another tower, two more towers from juvenile, juvenile probation, a shredder from juvenile probation, an office chair from DA's office, and that day, a backup server from the Auditor's Office, from optical library vault, from the Auditor's Office, keyboard in the Auditor's Office, bell tower from the Auditor's Office, another bell tower from the Auditor's Office, and a one-four door filing cabinet from the District Clerk's Office, video recorder from security, one bell optical place from security, six black and white cameras from security, two cover cameras from security, and then finally, Magnavox TV, relation dumpster by security. So with those 30, four items, do we have a motion to recycle or destroy those items as they are beyond their useful life?
Motion.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. That takes us to audit number seven. Audit number seven is approve agreement for donation of money from, I'm not sure how to say this, is it One OK or One Oak?
Uh, One Oak.
One Oak.
Yeah.
For maintenance on County Road 335, 339, and 340. Mr. Crenshaw brings that to us. Mr. Crenshaw, what do you have there, sir?
Yeah, I'd just like to get approval of a donation that's been offered to us for $15,000 for maintenance on them roads after they've come in with pipeline. And they've agreed to the $15,000 for these, to get that road, 335, 339, and 340.
Is 340 the one that they cut at a diagonal of long, long ways, forked roads?
Yes.
Yeah, I got a guess over there, okay. I'll get some more head napping back over there too. All right, good. Okay. So One, One Oak is going to make a donation of $15,000. Gentlemen, any questions or comments on this?
All of these roads are precincted.
Well, I'm not sure about that, because part of 335 goes over into One. That's why they put it on there, it's a precinct.
335, yeah, it does. Well, with, with the emails that I've sent them, is a certain portion of each part of the road, it's like 1.6 miles on, so it'd be up to County Road, 335 would be up to County Road 340, is, is the way I have it.
Okay. Well, I make suggestions, we don't put which precinct it is, that way if you, if it goes across the precinct line, which is really pretty close, whatever you're talking about, then we can, we can put it over to precinct one if it needs to. It's just a kind of identifier, so later we need to pull it up, look at, we can see where it went.
Okay. If you keep it, if no precinct it out.
Right, just keep it as County Road 335, 339, and 340. That way, it can go wherever it needs to be.
Yeah, that'd be okay.
Okay, all right, get there. With that then, can we have a motion to accept that donation and to allow me to sign the same?
I'll say it.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. And, Mr. Crenshaw, are you going to take this back out to there, to them, or email it to them? How do you want to get, they've got to sign off on it as well?
After it is signed off, I can email it back to them, or scan it, and let them sign it, and send it back again.
Okay. Kathy will need to attest to the signature on there. Okay, there are two of them, you want another one, or, okay. Mr. Crenshaw, she'll get that to you, she'll attest to it, and then you can get it sent to whoever it is at one oak.
Okay, all right.
Get there. Get there. All right, audit number eight is to open and accept bids for County Transportation, County Transportation Infrastructure Funds, CTIF, grant road materials purchases, and award to contract. Miss Spear?
We have several bids. And just for information, bids were due by 12:00 PM Friday, May 22nd, and all bids presented were received by the deadline. And I'm going to open them in no particular order. And I cannot tell who the first bid is from. First bid is from Diamond P Aggregates out of Rising Star. And the only thing that we requested a bid on was Commercial Base. And theirs came in at $7.49, $7.49 per yard. They have included a conflict of interest questionnaire. And I do not see anything on a Form 1295, I'll have to give them.
So that's Diamond P Aggreg, $7.49 a yard.
Yes, sir. Are you ready for the next one?
Sure.
Okay, the next one was received from Vulcan Materials. Do you need this, I stamped the, the shipping? Okay, Vulcan Spear. Is $6.50 per ton. Their conflict of interest questionnaire is included, as well as their Form 1295. The next bid received is from Nobles Materials. They're based in Abilene, but they do have a plant here, easily. And Vulcan shows to be, they have San Antonio and Dallas addresses listed. But it's also for the plant located here. Nobles bid $6.25 per ton. Their conflict of interest is included, as well as their Form 1295.
Robert, I always have to be reminded, which is larger volumetrically, is it a ton or a yard?
1.25 tons per cubic yard.
Okay, that's for Commercial Base.
Yes, and the conversion rate was added into the bid specs. The only one that's probably going to be the cubic yard would be a Diamond P, and it figures at 5.992 per ton.
You already worked it back out?
Yes.
The next bid is from, from Durado Construction Group. They bid $6.58 per ton. Conflict of interest questionnaire is included, but not the Form 1295.
Were they out of the red?
They show from San Angelo. And do they have a plant here?
Never heard of them.
Okay. Obviously, I haven't either. The next bid is from, it shows Nathan Urias out of San Angelo.
What's the name of you?
Oh, it's the Durado bid also. Yes, it looks like there's, well, this envelope is open, so maybe they just pulled out one and stamped it in the office. And this is another. Yes, because this one is a copy.
So it's the same, it's the same material?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The next bid is from Ingram Country. It came from Hudson Oaks. And they do have a plant in the county. This address says brown wood. Take a look. Their bid is $7.50 per ton. They did include the conflict of interest questionnaire and the certificate of interested parties. parties.
We have Noble Material, six dollar twenty-five cents a ton, and they also have both the NOSA conflict and the twelve ninety-five. We've got Durado Construction at six dollars fifty-eight cents a ton, they have the NOSA conflict, but not the twelve ninety-five, we'll have to send that in as well. And then finally, we have Ingram Concrete at seven dollars fifty cents a ton, and they have both the NOSA and the twelve ninety-five.
That is correct.
Correct, okay. All right. Commissioner Range, you're running the CTIF program, um, so you want to?
Well, you break that down, and it's, and like I say, it was listed in the bid specs, we've been using the FEMA conversion rate of one point two five per cubic yard. She break that down, it's, uh, five point nine nine two. The way the, the rules are set up, we have to accept low bid once you do this, and I make a motion, we accept the bid offered by Diamond P. for the grant.
Okay. All right, with that, gentlemen, according to what Robert has learned from the, uh, the fund application and the project they're working on, we take the low bid, which is Diamond P. Aggregate, five dollars and ninety, five nine nine two?
Yes, nine nine two.
Okay.
Five nine nine two.
Okay, you'll still have to send in the twelve ninety-five. Uh, do we have a motion in to accept Diamond P. Aggregate pending the submission of the twelve ninety-five?
No, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Aggregate?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Aggregate?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Aggregate?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Aggregate?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Aggregate?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Aggregate?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Aggregate?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Aggregate?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Aggregate?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Aggregate?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Aggregate?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Aggregate?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Architecture?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Architecture?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay. May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Architecture?
Motion, sir.
Motion made, accepted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Judge, do you just want to write on here, accept it as a date?
What do we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
That's, that's fine, now I just need a copy of it.
Okay.
Need it all.
Okay.
May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Construction?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Construction?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Construction?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
May I have a motion in also to sign approval for Diamond P. Construction?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
Okay.
And what we need to do as far as the paperwork on the state side?
We are also checking into what is offered through Texas Association of Counties to see if it's comparable. So it's at a large discretion what you want to do. I would, at a minimum, like the ability to bid life and vision if Texas Association of Counties is not comparable to what we have now.
So what your thinking, your thinking is, and I know you and I have talked about it, is not bid on the health, but bid on the life and dental?
If Tac does not offer comparable, yes.
Okay.
We don't have to bid if we go through Tac.
Okay.
Life and dental?
Life and vision.
Yeah.
Health and dental, just renew through Tac. Life and vision, bid if needed.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard the situation. Do we have a motion to request bids to renew with Tac and bid for life and vision if Tac is not acceptable to our budget?
Moment.
Okay. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You can both, same sign. Next up?
Judge.
Yes, sir.
Can we have a short recess?
Okay. And with that, before we take a recess, is Mike Frye here or anybody from Silver Star?
Yes, sir.
There you are. Sorry. Hadn't seen you in a while. Okay. All right. So we've got a motion to take a recess, just a short recess. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second. Motion for recess and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're in recess. All right. Do we have a motion to go back into session?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You can both, same sign, and we are back in session. Okay. We were up to item number 13, which is discussed, considered presentation from Mike Frye and others related to Silver Star partner Wind Farm and possible tax abatement. Mike Frye is right here. Mike, you want to come up now?
Sir.
And announce your name, please.
Matt Wolski.
Matt Wolsom?
Wolski.
Wolski, Matt Wolski. Go ahead and get on right here.
Could you spell that, please?
It's W-O-L-S-K-E.
Come on up. Now, Matt, do you also work for K.E. Andrews?
No, sir. I'm affiliated with the Silver Star Wind Farm.
Okay. Okay. Mike Frye is with K.E. Andrews, Evaluations and Tax Solutions. He's the Director of Energy Services. And Matt is here representing Silver Star. It's my comment. John, the copy of our adopted tax application and application. I thought it'd be a good idea to add this.
If you want to advance to slide four, it talks about Ares overview and just going to give you of generation types, including not just generation, but transmission and midstream as well. If you'll advance two more slides, it'll be slide seven, talks about the transaction overview. And this is specific to Wind Farm, Silver Star, One Power Partners. BP was the original owner, and the transaction occurred in December of 2018 where Ares acquired the project. There were three wind farms involved in that transaction. Silver Star is one of them. Silver Star, currently, the nameplate rating is 60 megawatts, and that's 24 turbines. And of those 24 turbines, there are 16 that are in Eastland County. It went commercially, the COD date, in September of 2008. We're in a process now that's referred to as repowering. So we're not increasing the size, we're not adding any towers. What we are actually doing, reinvesting in the project, is that the turbines that were put up initially were cutting edge at the time, but they didn't have really any operational experience. And there's just been a tremendous number of design flaws and issues with them. So what we are doing is going in and just removing the turbine section. So the towers stay the same, the collection lines stay the same, foundations stay the same. We're just pulling the rotor and the hub bump in the NACL and replacing it with new. So it's a more efficient, more experienced, more robust turbine that has much more experience and longer life. So the original 60-megawatt nameplate rating was 2.5 megawatts each for those 24 turbines? Excuse me. And with the new turbines, they're actually more efficient within the low profile, but they're only 2.2 megawatts. So they'll actually start generating at a little bit lower wind speed. So over the course of the year, they're actually more efficient, will generate more megawatt production over the course of the year, even though they're less megawatt rating. And this specific wind farm is in the north hub of ERCOT. So there's five hubs in ERCOT, and this specific wind farm is in the north hub. If you go two more slides, to slide nine. So this gives a pictorial of really what's taking place with the repower effort. So the existing turbine is the one that's on the left. The, this picture shows what we're referring to as NACL, which is the turbine. The turbine has a gearbox and the actual generators in it, and then the hub and the blade. So that repower effort is just replacing those sections, and then we're installing an adapter piece so that, because it's a change in manufacturer, the bolt pattern is actually a little different between the tower and the prior turbine. So we have to put a little adapter so that we can make the technology. On the next slide, this is a, really a summary of the Silver Star repowering effort. So you can see where the original capacity was, the 60-megawatts I referenced. With 2.2, it will take it to 53 megawatts total. The 16 that are in Eastland County will be a total of 36 megawatts. Right now, we're forecasting Q3 of 2020, this would be complete. I think, and then I'll let Mike talk about the actual abatement and file proposal, let Mike talk about the next one.
Okay. Page 12, what I've included in here really is, after looking at the guidelines and criteria that was set in Eastland County, what I've done here is just put together the abatement based on your category of jobs, investment, NICS, codes, and retain jobs, and headed up a point system that's included in your guidelines and criteria. And what we're talking about here is in 2021, coming out of value of about $25.2 billion taxable value for the project in Eastland County. And basically, this is going on, say, in 175, 25, which is in your guidelines and criteria based on your point system. There's also another kind of abatement that a lot of counties and other jurisdictions are into with industry. It's a, an abatement with a pilot payment proposal. And what that does, it takes the, pretty much takes the value equation out of it, and it's a pre-negotiated value. It's basically 100% abatement, and industry would pay on, or the project would pay taxes on it with a pilot payment based on a, for a megawatt price set up for the project. So what it does is, this will figure into, say, under your current point system, equal this abatement to the straight, straight abatement. It would be payments of about, the pilot payment would be $28,080 per year for five years. And then after five years, it would take up your regular taxes. And the reason that a lot of counties are doing this in the hostile districts around the state is, it's, basically, it's a negotiated amount, and it's the equivalent of the standard abatement, but the revenue is not true to tax revenue. Therefore, it's true to contractual revenue. So it takes all the value negotiations and all that kind of stuff out of it.
Pilot stands for payment in lieu of tax.
Tax, yes. And that's on page 14. And so basically, the pilot payment is not calculated in the form of determining the tax rate. It's handled in that manner.
So, Mike, what happens on year 11, once you get out of here, out of the pilot program?
Five-year plan and business.
We just, what we've done here, we just put, get your five-year plan based on your point system and your guidelines and criteria.
Okay. So what happens after you go out of pilot? We've never done a pilot.
Sure.
It's just planned, therefore.
Except before the price value, the taxable value is, is regular taxes.
Remind me, it seems like we had to do a reinvestment zone in that area around Dezenoma, which is where we're talking about Howard Cemetery and all that. And that was, I think, 12 years ago. Well, yeah, because it said 2008. So how do we handle that if we go forward on the reinvestment zone?
Reinvestment zones can be, should be able to be renewed. They're good for 10, for, you can have them for 10 years, but they have to be renewed every five years typically. So I had to check in to see, it's been this long, and it has not been renewed. If you go back and get renewed, or you have to create, recreate a reinvestment zone. That would be a question.
I'm not exactly sure. This, this came to light, just as I became county judge, so I'm not really sure. Of course, there's not a school down there, except for Huckabee comes over to Eastland County a little bit, and Ranger comes down. So I know in some instances, like in Cisco, they would do, move the school district, they would use the school district's footprint to do a reinvestment zone. I don't know how this works down there, because there's not, there's not a school, of course, at Dezenoma, which is the closest community in that area.
Generally, all the landlords involved, who were in the project, their legal descriptions and everything, that's what's said in the reinvestment zone.
I see. You're basically on the flats, on the ownership of the land. Okay. Okay. You have to look into that and see if that was even feasible, because we may have to go back and go through that whole process again.
Well, as far as creating a reinvestment zone, it's not a huge deal, but I believe the one that's out there will probably be renewed.
And I realize you represent Silver Star, you're here as a representative. Other counties use pilot, and other counties, of course, do just a straight abatement, which is what we did for the three that we used in the past. I've talked to some of the county judges, and some of them like the pilots, some of them don't like the pilot. I guess it's up to each individual as to how that works. The bottom line is, I guess it looks like the estimated tax value for next year would be $25.8 billion. That's the estimate.
Yes. Like I said, that's, that's a proposal, obviously.
If you have questions or comments, now is a good time.
I understand that, of course, we weren't all of the theory back then when BP originally started that wind project down there, but there were like three phases to that project. There was two other phases that were never completed in then. Is that something y'all are still looking at as far as Silver Star goes?
No.
Okay.
Just currently, just the repower.
Just the repower.
When they first came online, it seemed like they were valued at about a billion dollars a piece, so that was the 16 that we had in Eastland County. And then there were the other ones, the 24, 24 over in Erag County. In fact, you've got to go into Erag County to access it to come back in, across from private property. I had a question, just for myself. I know back in 2007 or '08, when this project was underway, there was an issue with the cranes going through there and tearing up the roads, especially around Howard Cemetery, making all the 90s with the big cranes. Does that operation change now, where the repower project still uses an enormous, large crane that might do some damage to the county roads?
So as far as the county road, it's all brought in on just regular truck beds.
Okay.
It's actually 18 truck beds for the crane.
Wow.
So it's just all brought in in pieces.
Okay.
And then you track that crane from turbine to turbine, but if we have to cross the county road, it's, it's actually a disassembly of the crane, and then you truck it and then put it back together. So we don't actually walk the crane on the county roads.
Okay. I remember going through a big issue trying to go around Howard Cemetery. Those of you who don't know, 495 goes around Howard Cemetery. They'd have to cut off part of the 90 degree corner to go around Howard Cemetery, kind of rebuild that area in there. I don't think they took the crane apart, did they, 18 different truck beds? But of course, technology's changed, so. So your proposal, and again, it's just for discussion today, is a five-year abatement. And the criteria that we have for our abatement policy is, you scored, was it 324?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah. You know, we, we have to, we're establishing a precedent for doing this. So we have to, we've got some other wind power and solar power that might be coming into other parts of the county. So of course, each project is different, but I, I think, Commissioners, if we need to apply it as evenly handed as we can across this. So if we do one for a pilot, then the others might want a pilot as well. I don't know what the other companies think about pilots. I'm not even sure what I think about pilots. It's a whole different way of doing the taxation on it. You're basically making an agreement with the county where you're paying so many dollars in lieu of the taxes.
Correct.
For a certain length of time. Okay.
It, what it does, it just applies a certainty to what you're going to get for this, it's a tax dollar. So each year, obviously, you know, in the state of Texas, everyone is reappraised normally, especially these kind of projects. So there'll be negotiations of values each year, and so it really kind of takes the hit out of that for, for a county or another entity.
Does it stabilize, from the county's perspective, you were in county government for a while, I'm trying to remember. Does it stabilize the income coming in until year six? And then at year six, it goes to the valuation process, it goes back online to an April 1 type? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. So if we did, if we set the budget, we would have to know that at year six, it comes off of this agreement and goes to the tax appraisal value and the tax rate at the current time.
Correct.
So you'd have to be aware of that.
With the dollar amount on what, the two proposals here at the five years are, are within $200, one of them.
Yes.
So the dollar amount's not going to be the big deal on this. It's, it's on the pure, I don't, I've said before, when you and I had a conversation, the 100% is pretty much done from what I've been told, 100% abatement for Wind Farm. I talked to some people out around Sweetwater, and they said, "We don't do that."
Sweetwater, Normal County never did. They did 64.
Yeah.
135 and 610.
Yeah. So we, we never did the 100%.
Our first one was scheduled out to where, like, year three, it started coming on at 25%, and then two years later, 50%. Finally got to 100% on year 10, but it creates an issue because by that time, depreciation has come in so strongly.
Well, you can see it by their numbers right here.
Yeah. The appreciation comes in so strongly, it eliminates the revenue to a large degree.
I think the pilot deal would be the way to go. I mean, personally, that's my two cents, because it's a generated income from them for the entire time of the abatement. Yeah, dollar-wise, it all equals out the same, but you're still getting an income from them through the project.
Well, it smooths out the cash flow a little bit.
Yeah.
Do you see more counties going that way, Mike, towards the pilot?
Yes, sir. They have.
Because of the smoothing effect on the income?
Yes.
I don't think it's just the counties either.
No, it's not. It's the school districts.
School districts, yeah.
School districts can't give abatements, they can give limitations.
Right.
So.
Is there another tax district down there besides the county and maybe Huckabee School?
Lingleville High School.
Was it Lingleville? Lingleville High School? Okay.
It is, it's very small.
And I'm not sure it comes over that far. The ISD down there just comes into Eastland County just a little ways. We have the elections down there, we have.
I think we say she was sitting there.
I think we have one or two voters out of the Lingleville area that live, that vote Lingleville High School, but live in Eastland County. So it's a very small little area, you know, around 495.
Well, I, my, my thought process would be that we try the pilot program and go with it from there. I mean, it's going to be learning experiences would go anyway, but with what we expect on the other end of the county, be something we need to explore anyway. Because I know in visiting with them, that's one of the programs I had mentioned.
And without, for you, my, my, do they talk more about the pilot?
Yes.
Okay.
Like I said, to be, as far as, pretty, 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 to be grand, you'd have to post public notice 30 days in advance. For reinvestment zone, I believe that's the 70s.
Yeah, that's been, that's been 12 years ago, or maybe 13, is when it actually started. I'm not entirely sure what process was in there. I know BP was very helpful in getting all that done for us, but they've done them all over the world, I guess, but we've done like one.
And y'all think y'all going to be done in the third quarter of the year?
Predict. All depends on weather.
I understand that. I understand that.
The scheduling you have out here, that, what you have given us today, just to think, just to think about, is a 100% abatement for the full five-year term, is that correct, Mike?
Yes, sir. The second, the pilot proposal.
Judge, may I ask a question?
Please, babe. Now is the time.
Mr. Frye, do you know what the 2020 taxable value is?
Not right. It's going to be the same as it was last year in 2019. It's very low. These proj, this project and all, all three that we were talking about come very close to being for much next. If a repower hadn't come along, it wouldn't come along. In fact, it would cost, cost them money to get it out, you know?
So it was bad. That project was just about, to a useful, end of its useful life.
Unfortunately, yes.
Is that because of the purpose, the design?
Correct. So we, we refer to them as hard down. So coming into 2020, there were only 25% of the entire Wind Farm unit operational.
Okay.
And most of the time, we would come in in the morning, and it would be in a fault state. We wouldn't have any turbines running, so you'd have to go research the issues. But the hard down designation that we have is either, they had an issue in the design of their blades where they're designed to take lightning strikes. They have receptors, and they have a grounding system within the blades that actually takes and dissipates that energy. The, the conductors inside that blade weren't large enough to not insulate well enough, so when they take a strike, it overheats and it delaminates the fiberglass. So then you have a blade that we can't operate because it's structurally deficient. And then the gearbox is where the second issue is that they were actually having, the teeth inside the bull gear are actually shearing off, so then we can't operate the turbine or replace one of the gearbox.
Is that a call they were made in Germany or somewhere?
These were actually in the U.S.
Oh, were they? Okay.
But they, they didn't have any actual operating experience when they were, they were purchased and installed, where the Festus turbine is actually worldwide, and this specific turbine is one of their highest in reliability. One of the changes that we made is that, going into this, we, we have a long-term agreement in place with Festus for the availability, so for the maintenance. So if a gearbox were to fail, or a blade were to take a strike and it had an issue, they have obligation to come in and repair it.
I'm trying to think of all aspects of this. If we do the pilot, you can't do any kind, it's a 100 ton abatement, but we get a contract to use, because we'll get the amount of taxes, basically, we would have gotten anywhere. But we can't do a hybrid where, like, it is pilot for part of the program, and it comes on the full tax value, like, year three or four or somewhere. It's going to be year six. So if we do a pilot, your proposal, or your proposal would be a pilot for the full five-year term.
It can be, it can be structured.
Yeah, it could be moved anyway, but that's what he's proposing right here, is the full five-year term.
And I just made it even with your trade abatement. So, and keep in mind, probably, before the repower, it's, there's going to be about probably 5% of the value left over from the original project. So everything else will be in equipment, in investment, and that's what the abatement will really be on. So there'll be a little bit of value out there left over that will be, will not be part of the abatement.
Okay. Well, I, I think we need to, you gave us some good information, and I appreciate both of you being here to bring us some more updated information from 12 years old. We've got to be careful what we do because we do have other projects, as you know, coming in. We don't want to lay a predicate that's not usable. I just, we've not ever done a pilot program before, so I need to look into it some more. With that, Commissioners, do you have anything else at this time, for Matt or for Mike? General, thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. It's not something that we've done very often, so I wanted you to come in and talk about that a little bit. Thank you very much. We'll get back with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That takes us to item number 14, discuss and approve a RECO turn contract with the sheriff's office. Sheriff Blackwood is here now.
Excuse me, sir. I had some to say on that item 13.
Item 13, for the Silver Star? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Would you announce who, who you are for the record?
Johnny S. Ervey.
Say it again.
Johnny.
Great, thank you, sir.
I appreciate the time.
Sure.
Appreciate my neighbors and their patience and attendance. I'm going to, if I may, can I just stand up?
Sure.
I'm trying to speak loud enough. I've been hearing about 50% of what's going on. Okay. I would just like to say, to voice my opposition to the wind power, okay? I realize in a group this large, there's probably some that are for it, some that are against it. I understand that. I just ask you to listen to what I have to say. I just listed, really, three main concerns. This is for whatever further expansion we might be considering. You know, in, in more distant, in rural, or rural, but in more distant, less populated counties, you know, this, this might be a good option. But we have a fairly populated county with a lot of small, smaller land areas, and a lot of residences on those pieces of land. It's more different from somebody that just has a large tract of farmland and wants to put a wind turbine or however many on that tract, and they don't even live there. That's one thing. But a lot of these things could go up too near your own house, and that's what I'm opposed to. And that's why I say I'm opposed to the further expansion of this project. Okay. It's estimated that it can devalue your property 40 to 50%. I've heard higher than that, but we'll just, we'll just stick with that. And you, you just have to ask yourself, would you, if you were considering buying a property, would you want one of these things near that property? Just honestly answer, okay? So you can see how that affects the value of the property. That's just kind of a common sense way of looking at it. There's also an environmental aspect to these things. And they're supposed to be to help the environment and all this stuff. When you consider the material that goes in to the supports, housings, the blades, the motors, the armatures, the generators, all of that, it comes from the ground. Somewhere it's mined. A lot of it's, they use petrochemicals on the blade, the contents of the blade and the housings and things like that. Not to mention, have you seen a picture of the absolute devastation of the area where the bases are made for each one of these things? Okay? That's another impact. And there's also the aspect of, that power has to go somewhere and get somewhere. So you have power lines running, and we see them, we see them everywhere. Same thing, material for the poles, the lines. And, and follow it on Google Earth, just follow it and see the clear cut path that has to be made to transmit this stuff hundreds of miles. So, so somebody in Austin or San Antonio can pull out a piece of paper and say they buy a green pound. The last thing is the aspect of the noise that they produce, okay? And I would ask everyone, if, you know, if you're for it especially, to go to one of these things in operation and listen to it. And ask yourself if you would like to have that even remotely close to your house. And I'll guarantee you, you will not. And, and the, the thing about it is, is the, it is a constant. Now, I, I stepped outside this, this morning and I heard a jiff. Okay? It's not terribly loud, but that jiff just goes, comes and goes. But if it was constant twenty-four hours, you got a different thing. And these things put out a constant whir and whoosh twenty-four hours. And it, the study of the effects on, on the people that are close to them have, they haven't been conducted thoroughly or not yet, at least the information that, that I've got. But they can, they can, just the, you just use your common sense, the constant noise. And then there's, there's the aspect of some of them with the light flicker in their houses from, where the sun is in the right direction. There's that aspect, but especially the noise. So I just ask everybody to consider your neighbors, if you're thinking about a further expansion of this thing. And I think if you put yourself in your neighbor's place, you would probably decide, we don't need this. Thank you.
I also signed a statement at that moment.
Sure, and would you announce for yours?
Sure. My name is Hogear Rocha. I'm Utesland County, located in February, pretty prone to virus. I'm originally from San Antonio, Fair County. I guess I just have some questions for you guys, just to make sure we're all on the same page. What was the value of the previous tax abatement you received?
That was, that was, they didn't receive a tax abatement.
I don't know what the value of that was.
What value was?
Yes, sir. But you mentioned there was three phases. Were phases two and three just not done?
Well, they originally, it's ameesements in place with landowners for the possibility that it became feasible to do and just the phase one was pursued.
And then, I have the last question. You, you mentioned earlier that there's twenty-five percent that were working. So if you don't get the abatement, what happens to the seventy-five percent that are not working? Or you'll, is your company gonna take them down, or are they just going to sit there?
Whole twenty-four would be repowered with new turbines.
I'm saying if you don't get the abatement, would you repower them?
Yes.
And you would repower all of them?
Correct.
And I guess what's the life expectancy of this?
Thirty years.
Okay, because the last one lasted ten years?
Silver star is twelve.
Twelve. Twelve questions on that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the wind power? They both went at the same time. Yes, would you announce your name?
Uh, Josh Willis.
Thank you.
I thought, I was curious, why are we considering tax abatements on these?
It's an option that we have to help bring in more development. If it goes away, it goes away. It's a good idea to use chapter three, one or chapter three twelve to try to bring some more businesses in here. And again, we've only done it a great time, Josh, as I was calling.
It sounds like we're gonna have some more possibly in the pipeline or in the future. They're already saying that, hey, we don't have to, we're gonna do this work no matter if it gets a bit or not. It's tough times economically for all people out here during the road. And we're talking about raising people's, I assume, raising their property taxes. So to make up for his abatement, he's not in this community. He's not here. It's a big hedge fund somewhere. We're here. So I don't really see why this makes any sense for us.
Well, that's one reason, that's one reason I said let's be careful how we do this, because there are some of them in the pipeline. We want to try to treat everybody, everybody as equal as possible.
Sir, so if you're talking about, not necessarily the repower, but you're talking about a new project and a huge capital, like two hundred million dollars, one hundred eighty million dollars. And the margins on these things are very small. It's not like it was back in the day when you get a power purchase agreement, a lot of money for electricity, it is, it's pretty small. And so if we're gonna bring a new one, there's a mighty good chance it wouldn't hurt to build without abatements, without the school district limitations. Not necessarily versus the repower, I'm talking about a brand new project.
Agreed. I just, I would be opposed to any type of repower in our county. That's all I have.
Thank you. James Dixon?
My name is James Dixon, I'm a foreigner raised here in Eastland County, moved away when I retired. My wife and I moved back. We live on the very western edge of Eastland County. I don't know who to talk to. But my wife and I are very much opposed to these things. In fact, I'm a member of a group in Callahan County who's been very active in opposing the further development of the wind turbines. We sit within, we have three pieces of property, three packages. They all sit within one half mile of the Eastland County, Callahan County line, on the southwest corner of Eastland County. And the thing is, where they would be located would be on high ground. And if you're, in some cases, within over fifteen miles of them, you're gonna see them. And you think, well, at nighttime, you're not gonna see them. No, if you don't drive through Sweetwater at nighttime, I invite you to do that. All the red lights are blinking and synchronization. I'm a pilot, a general aviation pilot. That's to keep me from crashing into them when I'm flying. Because they sit, sometimes the blades will sit as high as six hundred feet. And so we just, you know, we could be making a decision here that would impact economically everyone in the county adversely. Except for those few landowners that have a lot of acres that put these things on. And I would be very much opposed to that. There's a book called Paradise Destroyed by Greg Hubner. I invite you to get that book if you can find it. I tried to get it on Amazon and they were sold out. But it's all about the sham, if you will, of the wind turbine business. If the, if the wind turbines weren't greatly subsidized, and if these tax abatements were not in place, the wind turbines would not be built. They're not economically viable. So I invite the county leaders here to really look into this because the first gentleman stated that the, I had heard numbers from twenty-five to forty percent econo, or, or devaluation of property if you're within close proximity of these things. I think probably the closer you are, the most aggressive that devaluation will be. And perhaps further away, it wouldn't be quite as bad. But you can see these things when you get to Sweetwater for miles and miles before you get there. So my vote as an Eastland County citizen would be, don't let them expand any more than they already are.
Amen.
Thank you, James. Anyone else on the wind power and the other way? Any response back, Matt and Mike, anybody? Okay. With that, then we will move on again to the RICO printer contractors sheriff's office.
Just got forwarded a copy of the contract from RICO to you and to the county auditor. Our copier that we have now is Xerox, it's at the end of its life. The contract on it expires in about two weeks. And we're already having a lot of trouble getting service on it. It breaks down constantly. We would like to replace it with a RICO. I believe we're gonna get the save. I didn't bring all my notes with me, but I believe it'll save ten to ten dollars a month. Going with the existing company. And it's a five-year contract, just like the other one. But it has a thirty-year, sixty-day deal where we can get out of it if we need to.
Do you want me to give exact numbers? I have to.
Sure.
The current lease is one seventy-three, twenty-seven per month, and the new lease is one fifty-nine, eighty-six per month.
And it is with Texas State DIR contract. It does have an alphabet clause. I found that on the county's D. With that, gentlemen, any questions or comments about entering into this new agreement with RICO? Pardon me, for a copier for the sheriff's office. Okay, can we have a motion to enter that agreement and to, if you'll allow me to sign the same? Motion made, accepted. All in favor, say aye. And opposed, same sign, and that's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us then to item number fifteen, which is certificates of completion for Texas Association of County Cybersecurity Awareness Training for Eastern County employees. We've got several on here. My staff has taken them, the JTs have taken them, county auditors. And I'm just going to read through these, sort of being on the record. Just read the names of people that have gone through the cybersecurity training. So one or two of these may be a certificate. State is required that we all take this cybersecurity awareness training class. So all of us are having to get that done before the deadline comes upon us. All right, I've got a certificate for Kathy Leffler, Jesse Spear, Stephanie Johnson. James Crenshaw. John Glenn has emailed to tack, but I guess he couldn't get his certificate printed off. It does say that he's completed that course. James Crenshaw, William Thomas. Dwight Henson, Douglas Pasley. Jeffrey Hallmark. Carol Britton, Amanda Sattington, Connie Jernigan. Suzanne Helen, Andrea May, Barbara Finley. Robin Carew, Jindy Bartley, Sandra Baugham. Roger Brownlee, Ruth Yarborough, Chisholm Sprow, Sprow. Kendra Lynch. Dana Stevenson, Lisa Brown, Justin Martin, Candace Tucker. Michael Reed. Joshua Pascal, Oduya Lial, Ashley Cockerell, Hope Delatory. Caleb Laylock, Keith Oakley. Donald Brawley. Sandra Alderman, David Maltney, Brian Butler. Ronnie Wilson, Travis Griffin, Robert Farr. Bruce Wyatt, Lawrence Wolf, Jimmy Howes, H Y L E S. David Worley, Tessa Coverhouse, Carolyn Williams, Wendy McDavid. Diane Fretree, Thomas Cummings Jr. Robert Lee, Robert Rains. Kenneth Saunders. And Jesse Spears, Stephanie Johnson. Okay, we're back, going back through it again. Okay, if you have any, I did not call.
Did you call Terry Humming? Sandra Baugham. Wendell White.
Did not call that one.
Wendell Tipton. Robert Bradford. April Ross. David Holfy. Samuel Alderman. Ron Butler. Donald Brawley. Barbara Finley.
Okay. All right. James, can we have a motion to accept those certificates of training as required by the state and complete? Motion made, accepted. All in favor, say aye. And opposed, same sign, and that is accepted. Okay, item number sixteen is discussed, considered, continuing the local disaster declaration. Right here, I have the disaster declaration that we're under currently, and it expires today, midnight. We did the initial adoption back in March. We did one continuation. This will be the second continuation of it. If that's the pleasure of the commissioner's court today. I'll just remind everyone that under government code four eighteen, which has been a pretty good topic of discussion, county judges can make the declaration, but it's only good for seven days unless it's removed by commissioner's court. So the other two, we did through commissioner's court. And just go ahead and get that process started. So today is the day that we either need to continue it or let it expire on its own terms at the end of, at midnight tonight. I will say that I've had at least one nursing home contact me just last week about getting a STAR, which is a state of Texas asset request to get some more personal protective equipment in. Let's see, National Guard is coming back probably in a week or so, with the ten days. And they're going to, by state mandate, governor test all the nursing home patients and staff members. Remember now if that fits in, anything we have to do for our disaster declaration? I'm just giving some updates about what's happening out here for disaster declaration. So at this point, commissioners, do you think we need to continue the disaster declaration we're currently under? Or let it expire? You can always institute another one. It's a bit more of a process, institute another one than do a continuation, but it's not, it's not a big deal. It does keep some doors open. It does keep some doors open.
Yeah, but the door's been open for a while. I'd say let it expire.
But anyone else? I don't really have... I'm neither for it nor against it expiring. If we have to do another disaster declaration, I can do that. It's good for seven days if we need to get some kind of request in. This is actually the longest disaster declaration we've ever had. Of course, we need to deal with floods and wildfires.
We left the door open last time for a few requirements to do some. None of them, only one of them that I know of even applied for grant.
Can I say something? We don't have a disaster here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
With that, anyone?
Judge, I think I have a public comment on this.
Okay.
Zach Dar here. Just wanted to... Thank you, Judge. Thank you, commissioners. On this particular one, I noticed that there are four justices on the Supreme Court. Justice Blaylock, Justice Gomez, Justice Boyd, and Justice Devon had a concurring opinion on May the 20th, May the 20th, not too long ago, reminded everyone that the Constitution, this is their conclusion, in quotes, "The Constitution is not suspended when the government declares a state of disaster," end quote. As he said, the coronavirus is not the disaster. The disaster is the government's overreach. And I'm so excited. I'm so excited, Commissioner Rains. I'm so excited. You're going to bring that resolution next week, or actually, the 8th, right? The June 8th. I'm so excited about that. I can't wait for all of us to discuss that together, and we're going to be back on June 8th.
Let's talk about the disaster declaration. That's our topic for the home here, sir.
Yeah, it is. It is. So this is the commissioners' court, right? Not the judges' court, commissioners' court? Is that right?
Right.
So the commissioners, are they allowed to hear discussion?
Presiding officer of commissioners' court, so we're all five of us take this as a group.
Okay, so if one commissioner would like to hear a discussion, then they are allowed to?
Do you do the same thing with your city commissioners, where the mayor's the presiding officer, but you all discuss it?
Yeah, we all discuss it. If I want to hear more discussion as a commissioner, I'm allowed to do that. I can say, I'd like to hear more discussion on that and not be shut down by the mayor.
So you've taken this to the city council, too, right? The resolution we all talking about? Because these are the resolutions we're talking about generated in the cities.
Yeah, the city of Atwater.
So you've taken that before you're all city council?
I have not, no.
You have not?
I'm excited that you are.
You're sitting here telling us that you want us to, but you haven't even brought it before the commission that you're on? Okay, that's what I needed.
Okay, with that, then?
I'm bringing it.
Somebody's got to be in charge. I guess that's me. So with that, Commissioner Rains, you want to take a motion? Now, I guess there's really no motion.
No action.
If there's no action, it'll expire at the end of midnight tonight on our most current disaster declaration, which we adopted on the 29th of April.
Sir, could I ask you a question about this? I don't understand totally.
Okay, we can answer that, please.
Sharon Williams.
Sharon Williams, thank you.
Yes. I have a sister that is in a nursing home in Cisco, and I understand that it's mandatory. They're going to do the tests on them. In fact, I think they've already done it.
Really?
But I wondered, what, under this disaster thing, does that do away with that, meaning that that order is no longer in place? That they have to, that everyone in the nursing home has to be tested?
That test, that order to test came from the governor's office, not from us.
Well, one of the questions I have is that I understand, from what I've been told, that I think we have a constitutional right to refuse medical treatments under the Constitution. And I just wondered what right, if she refuses to take this test, if she did, I heard that the people that refused would be shipped off to another place.
I have no idea about that, Ms. Williams. That's an issue. Talk to your governor or your state rep.
Okay, well, that sounds like it would be very upsetting to old people that are already in bad health to be moved somewhere else.
I don't know. I haven't heard anything about anybody being shipped out. It's just a test. But beyond that, I don't know. I haven't really...
No, that's if they refuse.
I didn't see much to follow with that.
If they refused.
And I haven't heard anything about anybody being moved because they failed or refused to do a test. I don't know about that. I've not heard that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the disaster declaration? It sounds like it's going to go away, but Ms. York, yes, ma'am?
Yes. I wanted to comment about disasters. If we had CNN, MSNBC, Fox News, Eastland County Today, Microflex News, Amber Alerts, KATX, and they wanted everybody to know that a grizzly mom and her cubs were rampaging on Seibert Elementary grounds, that would be a disaster. We would be justified in shutting the doors of the elementary schools, not letting the kids out. But what if we found out it was a family of scunts? At that point, you unlock the doors, and we have discovered that this was not the grizzly we were told it was going to be. It's a family of scunts, and we need to open the doors.
Okay. We're not going to take any action on, so the disaster declaration will expire at the end of today. I'm sorry, is there somebody else? It's massive, yes, sir.
I would like to say that I feel like we're being disd.
You think what?
We're being disd.
Disd, okay.
Yes. I had requested to say something in the beginning, and you pushed it through in 60 seconds. And attitude, pompous attitude and arrogance that I have observed makes me want to doubt my trust that I have had here. And I'm just, I'm aggravated. I believe that you're being disrespected. You want us to respect you, and that's hard to do, Your Honor.
Okay. Anything else? Is that it?
I have a lot of thoughts, but I'm not willing to share them right now. I just, I'm losing my trust and confidence. The last time, you told us you would consider what was said, and if you had considered half of what was said, you would have opened up 50 percent. But these nonessential people...
We're not going to go back down that road again.
Nonessential people are essential people.
In this room, there's no mask.
Why can't we let our people go back?
I couldn't have. I couldn't have. That's because the local health authority said you didn't have assets for it.
That's not, that's not accurate.
That is accurate. Yes, sir, it is.
It wasn't your decision. It was your decision.
Because our local health authority says, we don't have these assets. You can't open. And I'm not going to go any further back down that road. I know you want to try to pick something out here so you can run with it, and that's fine. But we're at this point right now where we're going to let the disaster declaration die on its own, terminate by some term is actually what it's called.
But I'm not trying to pick any. Are we opening it up?
Are we opening it up?
Yes.
We're opening it up just exactly how the governor says, open it up. In fact, I just put out a press release last week about that. You've got to follow in there what the governor says. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item number 17, which is the updated county burn ban. We no longer have a burn ban? No, wait, we do have a burn ban. We got some reins. Anybody want to take a motion from commissioners' court to put the burn ban back in place?
To remove.
Okay. I think I got mine, 10th, and that's your name.
Yes.
Did you?
I've been called both directions.
Anybody in contact with the department?
That's one area.
Okay. I have to go big man, worry me.
I thought worrying was the people in. But I picked all the burn ban.
Everyone should meet on the stairs in front of the courthouse.
So we don't have, so we don't have any, first again, removing the burn ban?
Sounds like that's where the pressure would be.
Okay. No action on the burn ban? Item 18, personnel matters?
Yes. We each have a report. Time period of the report is April, May 21st. During that time period, there were three new hires, one part-time dispatcher, one full-time deputy investigator at the sheriff's office, one full-time jail guard, one suspended termination equal time at the sheriff's office.
That's been a while. Okay. With that information, personnel report, anyone else?
Officer wants to report.
All right, we have a motion then to accept that report after minutes. All right, motion made, seconded. All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed, same sign. And that's carried. Item number 19 is certification, let's stand for the matter, certification with the red leaves.
There is one certification. It is $599.12 received from Texas Association of County Self-Employed Employees Group. It was listed in general fund and credited to the combined region's reimbursement program. I'm asking the court to increase the auditor's office travel budget by the same amount. This was a healthy county group camp reimbursement.
We have one certification, just the red leaves. Can we have a motion to accept that certifying? All right. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. And that's carried. Okay. That takes us to 19B, which is emergency amendments.
There is one emergency amendment. This is the one that Jason Wagner was...
Please, it's stayed here with us a hundred years.
Oh, you're here.
I was hiding.
Do you want to explain exactly?
So, as you know, I've inherited some equipment problems out there. We've talked about several times. I've learned that we are running on our backup repeater already. We have been for a while. The first one had, evidently had enough problems for them to switch over to the backup one quite a while back. And of course, if it goes out, we're, you know, that thing runs everything. You know, all fire, police, dispatch, commissioners, all sorts of stuff. And we also have two computer towers. I've previously discussed that I was hoping I could make my way to the next budget, but I don't know that I can. If one of those goes out, the radio goes out, too. They both control the radio towers and all the radios. There are seven computers out there altogether, tower, PC towers. Two of them run the radios. Two of them run Tlets. Two of them run 911, and one runs other, just other miscellaneous stuff. The 911s are provided by the COG, so we don't have to worry about those. But we do have to worry about the Tlet ones and the radio ones and the miscellaneous ones. The two radios are on their last leg. CPU fan's not working on one of them. Hardware's failing. They're past the end of life expectancy, like a lot. They're not CDS compliant anymore. They should have been CDS compliant by January 1. They're not, they're not even upgradable to be CDS compliant. So those three items are run a lot of stuff. I'm hoping to go ahead and get those replaced. We're coming into lightning season. I mean, it's a matter of time before they fail, and I'd like to be ahead of it. And I'd like to put one of those, at least the one that doesn't have the CPU failure on it, put it back in the back, clean it up as good as I can for maybe a backup if something happens to the new ones that we're buying. At least plug and place until we can get it fixed. And the same thing, I'd like to take the old repeater, which is several, several years old, and put it back on the shelf, too, for just in case, as a go-back-to-a-backup. And that's all it really needs to be used for, is a backup until we can get it replaced again. I know it's a lot of money, and I know it seems constant. I understand. But that's one of those critical infrastructure things that really need to be looked at and maintained and ahead of the game. You're always way too late if a piece is gone out.
Where are we going to get the money?
We have, and that's if we declare an emergency, the money will come out of fund balance. And there, according to the audit that was just presented, 208,000 fund balance in dispatch. So it would just come out of dispatch fund balance. It would not come out of general fund. And it was actually my advice to go ahead and request an emergency amendment because there needs to be a backup of everything. And right now, there is not. And it is. I mean, there were horrible storms Saturday night, Sunday night, Saturday night. And this is the season that it gets hit, and then it's down. So there needs to be backup out there, and right now, there is not.
So...
Well, it's failing without even the lightning hitting. It's just so old that, I mean, computer towers, they go out constantly, you know, without anything else happening to them. They just run, they run 24/7 a day, 365 days a year for the last 10 years, this big season they're running. So...
I'm like the motion that occurred, the emergency disaster.
Be careful.
The emergency to replace the stuff for dispatch.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to make an emergency declaration for using dispatch fund balance to purchase radio equipment, which is on the DIR. Get the numbers in. The DIR contract is for $13,630 proposed by Land Communications. And then, secondly, for the computer equipment, which is what Jason just explained to us about the PCs, software, programming, all of that, and that amount is $7,712, also provided by Land Communications. We have a motion and a second before us. Any further discussion? Okay, so is this for the declaration of the emergency? And also to pay these, or to accept these two contracts and to start this process?
Yes, sure.
Okay. Ms. Key, does that get us a little bit of a...
Yes, sir.
...decoration and the funding? And we have a second by whom? Ms. Rachel Maxwell. Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Go there, Robin.
I'll just open Jason's meeting this afternoon, as good as I are. You got one today?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I'm grunting now, actually, now.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Let you know.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate you.
Jason, good luck.
I'm happy you passed this evening. We'll see you again.
I love you.
Hey, I'm social distancing.
Are you going to give Jason permission?
Jason, would you like to have permission to sign these contracts with Land Communications?
Yeah.
Well, if we give you permission, we have a motion to allow our Justice Ministerate of Jason Wagner the authority to sign the contracts with Land Communications. You have a second. Okay, made a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well. Sign away, sir.
Thank y'all very much. I appreciate y'all.
Good luck.
Jason, would you like to sign, Ma'am?
Contract.
There you go.
You are a rock, dog.
Here you go. I'd like to have this one back. Jason, here's one for you. Does he have a copy?
I can do it.
Thank you all very much.
Hey, Judy, thank you for being here, recording all this, making the...
I should get on Facebook.
I thought I might get some of the group to go outside and watch on the phone, but I don't think they left. Anyway...
Sounded like there was people out front.
We're going to move on to 19C, which is amendment changes by fund. Ms. Key?
Yes, there are two pages of amendments I need to bring your attention to. On the first page, the second is commissioners' court, 010401. There are changes to payroll items. That was for the time that Sherri Williamson was still...
That was for the time that Sherri Williamson was still here and Kathy Blackwood was bringing. So Judge Beal's requested a budget amendment to cover the overage.
Within my own budget, which makes sense.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But it's not an emergency coming from fund balance. And also, in 010475, farther down the page, there is an adjustment for the assistant DA. That was already approved by Commissioners' Court, but I, I wanted to bring it to your attention. And then in precinct, no, in dispatch, there was an amendment between group health and the HSA contribution, and that was just because an employee had chosen HSA. And then in 052475, at the bottom of the second page, and also 053476, those are also the adjustments for the additional assistant DA that were approved last Commissioners' Court. Or previous Commissioners' Court.
There's no questions or comments on these amendment changes by fund? Here, no question or comments? Can we have a motion to make the amendment changes by? Motion made, seconded, all in favor, say aye. Can you blow the same sign? All right, 19D, report of financial condition.
Yes, we have two reports. The first report over is the April monthly report, end of month report. The first section is the combined statement of cash position for April. As of the close of April, full of business, April 30th, general ledger balances for general fund checking, $3,597,464.39. Tax pool, $330,625.49. First Financial Bank CDs, $868,377. One Texas Bank CD, $250,000. One Sherps Bank CD, $250,000. One Prosperity Bank CD, $215,000. Tax pool prime, $519,649.58. Texas class, $508,594.46. Total funds on deposit, general ledger balance for general fund, $6,574,710.92. Roden Bridge checking, $1,301,701.6. The other funds are listed. And then on page four of the report, top right, total general ledger balance, all funds on deposit for the county, $11,733,076.22. There were two pages totals. Then the combined statement of revenue expense for April. End of April, general fund revenue, $8,270,840.54. General fund expenditures, $5,628,927.61. Roden Bridge revenue, $1,436,770.95. Roden Bridge expenditures, $1,133,867.79. The other funds are listed. As of the end of April, we were in a very good cash position on general fund, all funds actually. The next report is cash receipts and dispersment showing the beginning cash balance, cash receipts, cash dispersments, and ending cash balance by fund and account type. There are several pages of that report. There's six pages of that report. The next report is the management report from First Financial Bank. On the second page, far right, pledged market value, $11,4625.72. This is sufficient to cover our funds on deposits with First Financial Bank. The Prosperity Bank also provides a pledge security listing, and the market value that they're providing is $486,521.8. Next is the interest report. It's two pages showing the interest earned, current is this year and history is same time last year. As of the end of April, we had earned $80,773.56. Same time last year, we were at $98,191.98, so we're starting to feel the decrease in rates. Next is the schedule of lease payments, showing the three lease purchase agreements we have, one from general fund for the election equipment, and two from Roden Bridge for the two precinct board greeters.
On the next page, you'll see the month and the bank account totals for April 2020. As of April 30th, 2020, they now have cash and other assets in that custody. At my office was $10,164,104.22.
Any questions or comments about this first set of financials? We have a motion in to accept that, and also to sign the affidavit as prepared by center of motion. Motion made, seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. For both same sign, that carries. Don't forget, we can't leave before we get all these documents signed, though. Okay, Ms. Key, that takes us to the report from 2019.
Yes, sir. This is full of business, May 19th. These are unrecognizable balances, and they're general ledger balances. General fund checking, $3,690,558.9. I don't believe there's differences in headers. And then Roden Bridge checking, $1,273,419.99. And then on page four, total general ledger balance for all funds, $11,701,559.39. There's also two pages totals, then the combined statement of revenue expense for May, showing the month-to-date and year-to-date revenue and expense for all the funds. And then the combined statement of cash receipts and dispersment showing beginning cash balance, beginning May cash balance, cash receipts, cash dispersments through May 19th, and ending cash balance as of May 19th. By fund and account type.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the second report, which is as of May, May 19th.
Aye.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. For both same sign, and that carries.